Really?
Not much, but some.
Well, it's like, no, the TV looks smaller.
Oh, no. The case is smaller, but I think just because it just looks different, it just gives you a different perspective.
So what is this?
Uh, well, how big is this TV?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
We are live.
So Tony, I put one by Andrew.
Oh, you did?
It's nine o'clock. Let's call this meeting to order and please rise for the pledge of allegiance and multiple silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call please.
Commissioner Ansorhi.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Commissioner Bunnig.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sotis Little.
Here.
Commissioner Rettonback.
Here.
And Commissioner Lumber.
Present.
Thank you. And that brings us to public comment. If you have any public comment, please call in at two three one, two five six, eight one zero nine, two three one, two five six, eight one zero nine. So this is a work session, so we'd have our action items then, and we'll begin maybe with Phase Two and Three of the HVAC project.
Yeah, thank you, and this is a continuation of our discussion from two weeks ago. We have Kirsten in looks like the hotel room somewhere in Pennsylvania, and we have Gary O'Connor live and in person here.
Morning.
And so Kirsten, you want to go first and go over the memo with the budgets? Then we'll let Gary talk about the situation downstairs and kind of decide what we want to do. If we wish to do something yet this year, we have a special meeting scheduled after this meeting if you want to take action. If you don't, then we won't have a meeting. So let's start, Kirsten, and the commissioners all have a copy of your memo.
The August 28th memo.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I just, what I'd like to do is just reiterate really quickly what we were able to do in combining the two budgets. You recall this is how the project kind of started back in June of nineteen, and twenty nineteen, rather, and so what we were able to do is to combine the two budgets for what was prior, Phase Two and a Phase Three, combining those into one, and we're able to realize some significant savings as you might expect. I'm happy to go through the line items if you want me to. If anybody has any questions, maybe we could start there. I, you know, I want to address the detail, but I don't want to have to speak about something you have may or may not already, you may have already read. So are there, are there questions?
Commissioner Lumber.
No, I think you should maybe go through it.
Yeah, could you just go through it here, kind of summarize it?
Absolutely. All right, so what we're going to do is we're going to take Phase Two, which involved the public areas, the hallways, the community room that you're, the boardroom that you're sitting in, and the downstairs in the community room, we were going to provide cooling for those spaces in the former Phase Two, and then in Phase Three, where we're going to complete the courtrooms, or rather reconnect the courtrooms, and then provide cooling for each of the offices. This involves the removal of ceiling tile. So the first area where we find that we've got some attached savings is in combining, you only have to remove ceiling tile once if you're going to mobilize only once. Basically, that's, that's where you're achieving the savings here, you're, by combining two projects into one, there are some synergies that are created, you know, primarily because you don't have to go for your bid process again, which is a time and money issue. There's no need for bonding, which is a savings for not only you, but for the contractors. Again, mobilization, which, those of you, here's how I define mobilization, you know, what it takes to get a project started, whether it's finalizing labor and finalizing materials, you're not really spending money on that stuff until, at the time of mobilization. So there's a saving, there's no need to do it three times, so you've got a real savings there. Obviously, if we're going to combine the two projects, the ceiling tile can come out once and stay out once until it's finished, so there's no need for an allowance a third time. We are also going to have a lot of equipment coming in and out from a demolition perspective. You won't have to pay for demolition a third time. It will just simply be combined, and we were able to realize, to me, it looks like this falls into the labor number, and there's quite a significant number there that's saved as well. If you, if you look at the table at the back of the memo that I shared with you, you'll notice the former Phase Two had roughly $610,000 worth of labor. The third phase would have about a quarter of a million dollars. We're calculating it now to be closer to the first number plus some, so there's roughly... I'm just going through my bullet points on the, on the first page. If you...
On the last, maybe I'm on, I'm on the last page where you've got equipment by owner?
Right.
And, and when I add Phase Two and Three together, it comes, you've got, it comes to 313,000, and you have it at 359.
Correct. I went back to primarily air tech equipment is the, is the place where we've had originally budgeted the equipment, and asked them to account for price increases which may have taken place this year, and also to account for additional increases which may come into effect the first of next year. And so they've done that number, and that's what their increase reflects. It's about a 5% increase.
Okay, so it's actually going up, you know, because we waited then?
Right. It's not, I mean, and that's, a lot of it is, that's what happens, it's a market increase.
This did add up to me, and I couldn't quite figure it out, there's no savings there, it's costing more.
Right, exactly. There is an increase there, but conversely, Chairman, you're going to notice that you'll, the labor number's going to go down significantly.
Right.
Which should be helpful, just simply because you don't have to staff up twice. There's the, there's some synergy in the insulation, the sheet metal, the plumbing, the general trades. For example, we won't need to hire somebody to come and repair drywall and painting and so on, doing finish work twice, because there will only be one project, we'll have them come along as we need them, so that number isn't essentially duplicated a second time. So roughly, roughly a half a million dollars, we're $550,000 from this perspective that we're looking to save. Couple of other, couple of other, just kind of functional benefits, the ones at the bottom of the list on Page One, you know, the disruption of the building, not disruption, but the disruption to the personnel that takes place because contractors are there making noise, for example, it's, that will be shortened. We don't have to, to, I mean, it's also kind of interesting, COVID is a rotten thing, but it's also kind of helpful because it provides you an opportunity to work on a building that's normally filled with people. For example, we're not picking juries in the building anymore, we're picking juries in other ways. So, does anybody want, does anybody have any questions specifically more about the budget numbers?
Commissioner Rettonback.
Well, this isn't exactly about the budget numbers, but I had a question about no need to purchase water source heat pumps on an interim basis. But what's the plan then for pumps?
Well, if you theoretically, if you take out pump, oh, and that, go back to the, I've stated it with the point of, of notice that the group of water source heat pumps that were replaced over the past year, that activity would not need to continue. So there's some savings generated there. You spent about $80,000 on water source heat pumps this year, or over the past 12 months or so, and so we could eliminate the need for that, simply because the project that we're undertaking would eliminate the water source heat pumps altogether. So if we're just going to take them out, they're going to be, they're going to be gone.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I still am confused about if we take them all out, then what are we replacing them?
Commissioner, we're replacing them in the public meeting spaces with variable air volume boxes and air handling units, which will help from an energy standpoint and also provide a greater level of comfort, and is more suited for the true occupancy of the space. For example, the commissioner's boardroom, the air handling unit that's working on it now, there's, there's just not enough fresh air circulation. We eliminated the cold wall there by adding that, the perimeter heating, and Phase Three will allow us, will allow the occupants in each of the offices to have greater control from a cooling standpoint and a humidity standpoint in their own spaces, which is not what you have now. In fact, it's probably the opposite, and I'm sure Gary O'Connor is shaking his head yes.
Thank you.
Okay, two weeks ago, Gary did a nice job of outlining the current situation and the problem we have, having currently, so I assume those problems would be resolved if we went with these, with this plan, right?
Yeah. The, the make-up air unit, the energy recovery unit downstairs in the office, in the space behind Jerry's office, that, that is pobbled pretty severely from a performance perspective, along with the water source heat pumps, and then, as you mentioned, this, this leak that we have, it's running from the former boiler room somewhere out underground toward the cooling tower, and we're going to get rid of that cooling tower and replace it with a chiller, and kind of abandon that, that route for the, the cooling chemical and refrigerant, I guess. Yes, it would, it would completely address Gary's problem.
Let me summarize if this is correct. Gary, could you tell us what estimate cost will be to repair the problem and impact it will go into Phase Two and Three here?
Yes, as far as blocking off all of the piping that goes underneath this building out to the cooling tower where the other additional pieces were put, we're looking at roughly $38,000. And that's new piping going through the ceiling and whatever chase ways that are needed to be done, insulating, supporting, putting everything back together again.
So that'd be, let's say that's option one, to do that, that'll be under $40,000.
Correct.
And what timeline, if the board said yes for that, just that, how much time would that take to repair it?
I better, I need to actually get back with you on that answer. Approximately, I guess, say roughly two weeks, and that's just a...
Okay, so fairly short amount?
Yes, it's a fairly short amount of time, yes.
And once again, could you go over the consequences if we do nothing, the current problem we're having here, just so everyone's...
Okay. Thank you. Currently, we do have an active, slow leak under the building. So what it's doing is I'm losing pressure and water volume. That water, if you will, in a sand freeze, cools these heat pumps as they go into their different modes. They have to have a certain temperature range to operate properly. Well, as it is right now, I'm basically refilling or repressurizing this system once a month, and that's why I have such a concern. Also, the concern is that we're dragging in dirt, if you will, or sand from under the ground. That's why I have to clean these screens as often as I have.
And that's where we're having the problem with the last...
That is correct. My concern is, is the fact that we're looking at cold temperatures coming, and as I've reiterated before, 32 degrees in water are not the best of friends.
Commissioner Wessel.
Thank you. Christian, I looked at the numbers, and it looks like by combining the two, we've been able to reduce costs by almost 20%, 18 points some percent. The only place we didn't realize that savings is in the owner rep fees. Is there no cost savings by combining the two for services paid for, the services from your firm?
Yeah, I expect there to be a closer revision of both ours and John Richards from Apollo Engineering. I'm merely trying to, if you were to put the projects together, they would take a certain number, a certain amount of time. We can, we can trim our number certainly, looking at, but if they get combined, the hours get combined, because the projects are happening simultaneously, and obviously there's a little bit more work on the front end and a little bit more work on the back end, but we can certainly look to trim our number as well. You could figure roughly 20%.
Thank you. Commissioner Ansorhi.
The, irregardless of whether we continue on with the heat pumps or we go with this other option, we still have to do that work to fix that outside...
Yes, sir.
You know, so that 38,000 isn't additional money or wasted money, we're going to do that either way.
It has to be done.
It has to be done.
For the chiller that's going to be put in place if so decided.
So that 38,000, if we spend that money to fix that, that's, we're going to spend that in any case.
Yes, sir.
What else would we have to do if we wanted to continue to use the heat pumps? Because my understanding is the replacement heat pumps that we've already replaced are working fine. I haven't heard of people complaining about hot or cold or anything like that, that they are working and they're working pretty good.
Everybody here has been great to work around, I mean, where these heat pumps are placed in the ceilings and the labyrinth, that has to be negotiated just to repair some of these things. As you know, we're approaching 14 years old on this. My, my comment is simply this, there are certain heat pumps that are shoehorned in that's very hard, and I underscore the word very, to even get at the service. But the problem that we'd be facing is, is continual breakdowns, where this new system here would basically eliminate that. I mean, you're talking about just general cleaning maintenances and common sense type things.
And Gary, can I also add to that, is that the, the heat pumps themselves have a shorter lifespan?
Unfortunately, they do.
Proposed equipment, so it's, it's a matter of, you're going to put them in, and you're going to have to replace them quicker than you would have to replace what we're proposing to put in, not to, and you have to also factor then the maintenance that's required for each unit.
That's correct.
Per year, per month, per quarter. This is, the water source heat pumps, I mean, going back to the original, you had a, you had a firm come in in the summer of 2019 to thermal image the building, and then they also did a study on the existing systems, and they prepared a pretty significant table which had a failing grade for continuation of, of business as usual, if you will, Commissioner Ansorhi, they gave it, it was a D or a D minus, whereas what we're proposing followed somewhere in the A to A minus range.
Go ahead.
My point being here, just like we had this discussion last time, we can go out and replace those heat pumps as they fail indefinitely and be cheaper than buying this new system. In, you know, just from a cost of money, the cost of money upfront to buy this, you know, yes, it's very expensive to go out and do all this work, to put in this new system. The cost of capital, you could take that money, set it aside, and replace heat pumps forever and not spend as much money. So, you know, I'm still struggling, you know, we're, you know, we keep coming back to this. Yes, I understand it might be a longer term, you know, ease of system maintenance and stuff, but heat pumps are a proven technology, and the new ones are better than the old ones. There's just no question about it, you know? The new ones, they keep improving, you know? Every year, they come up with new technology and better, so as we replace these heat pumps, the technology is getting better and better. So I can't understand why we keep coming back to say, hey, let's spend all this money to go to this new system when it's obviously a lot cheaper to just keep replacing the existing heat pumps with the new tech, new, new heat pumps. There's just no question about it.
Are the existing heat pumps being run off the AVCO?
Yes.
And the AVCO is on its, what is this line?
The AVCO itself, the cooling tower, of course, it is showing its age as well, as far as the implements that are in there. Structurally, the cooling tower, the piping and all that is in good shape, it's just the, the guards that are on the side, the screens, if you will, that prevent the leaves from coming in, they're deteriorating. That's where the concern is. The galvanized tank that holds 550 some gallons of water, yeah, twice a year, I literally go inside there and scrub it clean, especially before winter and then spring, because of the, where it's put, all of the dirt comes in from the parking lots. So what I'm trying to say is, is yes, I keep an eye on the structure so that we can spearhead if there's any trouble, leaks, or anything else that's a concern.
So...
Go ahead.
The new, the new tank, the news, the new tower?
Oh, that'll be a chiller.
A chiller, the chiller, is that outside?
Yes, in its place of the AVCO unit now.
Okay. Would it have some similar situations down the road, similar problem?
No, because it doesn't use water to cool it, it actually uses refrigerant and usually a barrel chiller, but it does need its coils cleaned, which is not a problem, that's just simply washing them out and making sure the debris doesn't build up. A lot less maintenance than what goes into this AVCO unit now, especially with where it's located.
What do we spend on maintenance generally? Do you have that number, what we spend a year on maintenance?
We have a regular contract, and that's all part of it.
Okay.
But what I, what I have done is periodically, when I see an issue, I just go ahead and take care of it, but it's, yeah, it's usually done under contract maintenance.
Then what would it cost me to replace all the screens and shielding?
Three years ago, when I cost, when I cost or priced all of that out, they were telling me there were certain parameters that have changed for that model. If you need a correct price, I can call them up and actually get that for you, but I don't have that information.
Ballpark idea, I mean, we're talking a hundred thousand?
Oh, no, no, it was, it was like six or $7,000 to do all of that, and that was then.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Ansorhi.
And again, you know, the piping, you know, doing some of this stuff is a very, you know, we're going to have to do the piping irregardless.
That's correct.
You've got to fix that irregardless. So spend the money to do what we have to do in either case, and maintain what we got, yeah? And sometimes it's going to be, come down to say, hey, you know, we need to replace this stuff. It's still so much cheaper. You know, it's just, it's still the way it is.
Commissioner Sotis Little.
A question for you, Gary. I understand... Pardon me? Can you hear me?
I thought you were on mute, I'm sorry.
No. Gary, my question is, you know, if we were to just continue replacing, as we are now, as, as items go out, is that going to address, what I understand is still the problem, which is we get excessive moisture in certain offices and things like that? So if we do, if we continue business as usual with the same system, it's kind of like, we're at a point with a used car, we've put a lot of money into it, we keep replacing tires and other pieces, but is it getting us where we need to go? If we wanted to take a road trip, for instance? So kind of just a strange analogy, but, but does this system, if we continue to pour money into it to keep it running, is it going to solve the current problems that we already have, which is excessive moisture, excessive cooling in some offices? We know the heat system that was put in the baseboard will take care of some of the heating issues, but what about the others, Gary?
That's a very good question. That's a very good question, only to answer that, of course, the new equipment, of course, does operate differently. A lot of the moisture that we end up with is above the ceiling, is an unconditioned space, and that's where we end up a little bit of the moisture, and you can see certain stainings on the ceiling tiles. I don't believe it will take care of that moisture humidity issue in its entirety, because those heat pumps basically are going to be told to come on and off by the control on the wall. I hope that answered your question.
Commissioner Sotis Little, I want to draw your attention, I don't know if you have it, obviously, you probably don't have it handy, but there's a very interesting matrix that the Rhodes Nation folks did for you back in the summer of 2019, where they talked about weighted factors and how you could contemplate, obviously, spending the money. It, it's a penny wise, pound foolish argument, and it doesn't, you're either going to spend the money in small increments, or you spend it all at once and begin to recoup the savings faster. And I, and I, if, I would encourage everybody to, to visit the document, the archive document that's probably back in the summer of 19 from Rhodes Engineering. They, they're, they and Apollo Engineering are of the same mind. The way that the building is used in actuality does not match the HVAC design occupancy. That's why that survey that we did upfront was so important, because we wanted to make sure that where we were experiencing problems, and sure enough, it's the areas where the building is, is in the greatest amount of use. So you can't, I mean, it's, it is, you can fix it in the way, you can continue to replace heat pumps, but you're going to spend more money over the long run than you will between maintenance and repair and replacement on an incrementalized basis than if you were to make the decision to, to modify the system and move away from a water source heat pump technology. It is a good technology, just not for that building, and move forward with variable air volume. Not only are you going to be able to match the, the source of energy, the source of cooling and heating to the actual use of the building better, but you will, you'll save money on energy as well.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I have a question about the, the installation of the boilers and the heat would take the heat pumps off for the winter. I mean, they have been heating the building as well as cooling it.
Correct.
So they will no longer be used for heating the building. Am I, is that correct?
That is correct, and they could be used for a second stage heat if ever needed.
As a backup.
Yes.
Yeah. But, but won't that then extend the life of the units, or will that, the fans run all the time?
No, the fans have to run all the time, and the compressors would still run if they were called for cooling and/or heating.
That's the problem. Sometimes you get, you get somebody who needs heat, and then it creates a need for cooling in other places, even in January, the courtrooms, for example.
Yeah, core of the building.
Because I did believe that when we talked about this, putting that heat in would make the life of the, the heat pump units longer.
Because we were looking at the idea that they wouldn't have to work in heat mode.
Right.
Yes, but you, you've still got aged units up there that is, you know...
Ninety some units that still have heat.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lumber.
But if we put in the VAVs, wouldn't we pull out those heat pumps?
Yes.
Yes.
And a considerable amount of piping, ductwork would be changed, yeah, you would have a...
If we would sell...
And we would sell, we could sell those heat pumps, probably?
Especially the newer ones, but sure, oh, yeah. And like I said, they're a lot easier to work on when they're down on the floor.
Yeah, for sure.
I don't mean to make that funny, but...
And all the new VAVs would be accessible, placed in accessible areas?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
VAV units are a mechanical operated thing.
Mm-hmm.
They are not maintenance-free, you know? I, I know existing buildings that have VAV units, that you gotta maintain those too. They fail, they, you know, it's, it's not, you know, don't think you're just gonna get something that you're never gonna have to work on, because that's just not real.
Well, basically, what they are is a damper inside tubes, and I'm gonna simplify this, a little control board and a servo motor that just simply moves this damper back and forth to allow that airflow of conditioned air as that thermostat tells it to do it.
Where it needs to go. I, I understand how they work.
Yeah.
Don't think that those are gonna last forever either.
Oh, no, 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 nothing will last forever.
Nothing lasts forever.
No.
And, again, my point is, you can replace those heat pumps out there as they fail forever, cheaper than you can buy this new unit.
Well, this may be a good time to put Jen on the spot here. From a financial standpoint, you have the numbers in front of you. How could we potentially afford to do this, or could we not afford to do this next year? What impact would doing this have on our budget? And where would the funds come from?
So, you're asking me my, my opinion on the two-point-five, or the replacement of the thirty-eight?
Well, let's go to two-point-five first, the big, the big number.
Uh, the two-point-five, you'd have to discuss with the treasurer, your general fund, fund balance, as of this morning, is three-point-nine. And so you dipped far last year with, um, the phase one. So, I mean, I spoke with Michelle a few minutes ago, before I came in here, knowing you were gonna ask me this, so it would be upon your county treasurer to decide where the funds, or the county board, if they were going to take it from DTR.
Or we could bond it.
Or you could bond. You can do your simple, your thirty-eight K with your contingency. Your contingency in the general fund is, um, four-hundred-and-forty-seven. I'll remind you that your twenty-twenty budget does not include any of your negotiations that, that happened last fall, so there's no budgeted salary increases in your twenty-twenty, in your twenty-twenty. In twenty-twenty-one, right, your, your two-point-five increase for twenty-twenty is not representative in, in the numbers.
But if the board shows just to do the repair, as Gary outlined, for under forty-thousand, that would come this year from our contingency fund.
Yes, your contingency would, uh, transfer over to your capital improvements, and we would do the repair there as it's over five thousand and have to be capitalized into the building again.
Commissioner Anderson.
When John was here last time, didn't he say that he thought we'd have to borrow the money, one way or the other? That's what I remember him saying.
Yeah, in a nutshell, that's my perception also. He felt very uncomfortable spending on...
Yeah, you know, yes, theoretically, you could take all your money and not have left anything for anything, but, you know, he didn't feel comfortable doing that, and that's my understanding, is that he said, you're gonna have to go out and borrow money, one way or the other.
I believe that's a fair statement. That's how I remember it also.
Well, and I believe he recommended the bonding over any other means.
Borrowing money.
Yeah.
It still is borrowing money here, right?
Right. But, but he said if we took it out of the, the DTR, and that when it came time to, to pay out the taxes to the schools and all that, then he would have to borrow it anyway.
Right.
So, we're better off going initially and not having to go through that.
Clean.
Because we can get a, a better interest rate.
Go ahead. Let me put you on the spot here, you know? Yeah, we, we got a pretty good handle on replacing the heat pumps now, you know, you've done, I don't know how many we've done, you know, ten, eleven, whatever it is. So, you know, that's a, a process that, you know, we've got a, we should have a pretty good handle on now. Are the other heat pumps that we haven't replaced, are they different?
Good question. Technically, where they're placed with the clutter that's around them is different. There are a lot of them, case in point, the two that feed this very room, they're huge. Um, but like I said, they're shoehorned in to a place where if we have a, a major catastrophe, a compressor, reversing valve, even a TXV valve, it's a big deal to repair it. And that was my biggest concern, even, um, Michelle's, where hers is at, her, her office has been starting to act up. And it's, it's an arduous task to even get a ladder in there to do something with that, uh, because we have to all abide by safety rules. Um, as you can see the scars on, on my person here, um, a lot of them come from this building, and I don't mean to make light of that, but...
That's why we pay the big bucks.
Okay.
But, my, my, my point here is, you know, it's a process that we got a pretty good handle on, is, is my understanding. And I have not heard a lot of complaints from the people that, where we have replaced them, that they're saying, oh, man, this is hair horrible, you know, it's cold, it's hot, you know? I don't hear that. You know, that, yes, you know, you're putting them in, yes, it's a pain in the ass, I understand that, but they're working. You know, the people seem, you know, I don't know.
No, that's a fair statement.
Yeah, and with the requirements of, of, of course, the Energy Efficiency Act, with this being a closed building, the blowers have to stay on all the time. With the, going back to the Energy Efficiency Act, um, the new motors, blower motors that are used in there, they ramp up according to what's called the static pressure, without getting into too much detail about that.
That'll slow, go fast.
Well, but we have a couple offices up, up there, uh, in the, in the legal floor, uh, that is actually quite loud for them, especially when they're, excuse me, dealing with people that are soft-spoken or phone issues, and that's been a concern. And we, according, uh, with me and our, uh, controls contractor, we're working on trying to do something about it. But to accommodate their request, I had put temporary stats in there so that those, um, fans can be shut off when there's not a call for cooling. So, you know, that kinda needed to be interjected into your, uh, you know, the answer to your question. These people have been very great to work with around here, and up in the courtroom, which is, uh, the, the one that was just last done, um, that was quite a task to get that taken care of, because it had to talk to two different types of heat pumps, but you had a question?
Commissioner Reitbach, Kevin.
Oh, I'm sure.
Um, I just want to make up air. I think that when, um, Kirsten was here the last time, she said that there would be a big improvement with make-up air if we went with the new system? And then learned about that, and wondering if that's not also what you're talking about, Gary, with the fan blowers, different temperatures?
It will be a big difference. When you're talking about variable volume of that airflow, there will be a major difference. You won't have the blower noise that the new heat pumps are delivering. I mean, that's a, that's a topic that needs to be considered.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Reitbach, it's, um, the stats that Gary has added so that he can accommodate those conditions in the legal area are a modification that fall outside of, um, the way that the building was originally designed and electrically wired, um, and that's, it's more, it's out of necessity, pretty much, because of the condition of the, um, the energy recovery unit downstairs. It's, and, and also too, the fact that you, you want it, you have to have a certain amount of fresh air coming into the building for code, and your occupants, given this time in our lives, would rather have more cool air, trust me, and you put on a sweater than, you know? But we, that will be eliminated if we get rid of, if we get rid of the situation that you have here, this makeshift kind of accommodation for, for various areas of the building. It's, you know, it wor, it works, and the solutions are good, and, and it, but it, at the end of the day, you're not, you're not, you're only putting Band-Aids on the situation, you're not addressing the root cause.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, if someone were building a brand-new building such as this today, would they be putting in the chilled beam, or would they be putting in the heat pump system?
Well, that's a good question, depending on the usage of the building, the type of building that's being put into place, and actually where it's located. To answer that question...
If this were a brand-new courthouse today, if we were looking at building this today, what would be, what would be your recommendation to go with?
Realistically, probably this chilled beam system.
With a dedicated, with a dedicated outdoor air supply?
Yes. Fortunately, we were allowed to go down there to Grand Rapids and actually see this in operation. And then, of course, you walk to the various ports of their offices and things like that, and overall, they were very comfortable. I mean, this was an area that had a lot of high foot traffic and things like that. Um, situation like this, heat pumps were great back when this building was being put in. Electricity was low in price and all that, and, and heat pumps are great, except, like you said, now we're to the end of their lives, and we're starting to realize, um, certain types of catastrophes that are coming to play.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then I guess, um, we're gonna have to make a decision about it, but I'm, we're not gonna do it at this meeting.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have a special meeting scheduled after this, for this topic. So, can you stay with us for the special meeting?
Oh, yes, uh, when, when?
We're ready to enter this budget meeting.
Okay. I currently have a, a repair going on at the jail right now.
We can call you.
Okay, please do.
Yeah.
Okay, are you done with me, or?
For now, yes.
In other words, get out of your face, right?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Well, I'll tell you, I got you right here.
That's okay.
Are you, is Jerry in agreement? Do you know?
Yes, no, with, with Jerry, um, as you know, the complexity of this entire, uh, building and its systems, yes, he, he's looking for, uh, items that aren't gonna give him grief. Okay, so in answer to your question, yeah, um, he, uh, he basically will follow anything that we all decide, period.
I, I wasn't implying.
If Jerry was here, he would tell you, and, and by the way, he had a conflict today, he had a long scheduled appointment to do this one, but this is beyond his level of expertise. He wants the system to work well and function well, and be as maintenance-free and effective as possible, cost-wise.
Yes.
But he does not have the expertise to look at these options, make a decision. That's why he's letting Sol and Jerry to help us with this project.
And that's why I'm thankful for that.
Was that a fair statement?
Yes, yes, it was, actually, and I made that commitment to him and to this place a long time ago.
I think one will leave him completely out of the...
Oh, no.
No, he's been involved with the whole discussion.
Yeah, he's notified of everything, including anything that I see in this building or the whole complex. Uh, he's thoroughly notified, has his chat for the important stuff.
And a number two, number two item is the AVCO cooling options? I mean, I think...
I think we talked about that.
I think we've discussed that enough, I think.
Yeah. I just put it out on the map, you're headed more information, but it sounds like there's no new information from two weeks ago, right?
No, that is correct.
So this will be the topic for a special meeting at the end of this budget meeting, and we, I'll call you when it's time for that meeting.
Okay.
Okay. But I just wanted to make sure before we combine.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I don't know, do you want us to call you when, at the end of the, when we get to the regular meeting?
If, if you need me, if you need me, just, uh, Chad, if you could just text me or something, I...
I can just call your cell phone and put you on the speaker if we have to, so just go ahead, get back on the road, safe travels.
Thank you.
How far do you have to go yet to get to your...
Uh, about five and a half, five and a half hours.
Five and a half hours, okay.
Yeah.
All right, safe travels.
Feel free to call me if you need me, okay?
Well, thank you for taking time to squeeze us into your vacation here.
No problem. Thank you, everybody. Have a, have a wonderful weekend, if I don't hear from you.
Thank you, all right.
Okay, take care.
All set?
Okay, here, so I'll call you when we're ready.
Thank you very much.
All right. That'll bring us then to the new one, clean water here.
Yeah, um, and I passed this out this morning to you. Um, as you know, we made an agreement with them that they're gonna go independent, and they're about ninety percent of the way there, they're working on their final documents and so forth, and, uh, part of the budget process, and it's probably an old site between Trudy and myself, that we did not include this in the budget process. We should have, so I apologize, it should have been in our memo originally. So this is a request, I asked them yesterday to clarify what their request was for this year, so you have a memo here that outlines that the way it'll work is they will become an, any kind of nonprofit very quickly here, we will then draw up an agreement with them that our law firm will draw up as a partnership. So, if you wish to fund them, as you have in the past years, it would be perfectly legitimate. Last year, they received four-thousand-five-hundred, I believe. Yeah, that's been kind of the amount last couple of years, I think it's been between three and five thousand for ten years, maybe, or longer than that.
Yeah, I don't know if it's that long now.
I think since two thou, I believe the reform, maybe off a year or two, two thousand and eight, I believe, the reform, and we've been funding them every year since. So, uh, they wish to continue doing the work, the difference is, they will not be under the umbrella of county government, and they can function as they want to more independently and not divide by, as you know, we talked about it last spring, how we really have not appointed them, they have fun, they have functioned completely separate than every other group committee commissioning we have. So we agreed to sever them as of July first, they are in the process of doing that, they had some issues with the shutdown and so forth, but I talked to Jeannie Williams and the group, uh, this week, they had their papers ninety percent completed, the attorney's drawing that up now, and then what's asked completed. If you wish to fund them, we will draw up an agreement with them to allow them to get county funds. So this is their request for twenty, twenty-one, it's five-thousand-four-hundred dollars.
Commissioner, what?
So, so to understand, I, I like that they're going to be on their own, since they really don't want to be entered the direction of, of the county government, so that being said, we would contract them for a service?
Yes, yeah, there's still terms, yes, that's a good way to look at it, we would contract them.
So I, you know, I have, I have no problem, we've basically been doing that at a couple thousand dollars a year, and, and I'm comfortable with that, but I, I would be uncomfortable with, with contracting them for some of the rest of it. I understand they are gonna have some fees to develop the five-oh-one C-three, but, um, I don't know if that's something we should really contract with them to do. Um, and then in the ministry of support, I'm uncertain of that. The rest of it, um, you know, to, for the, for the studies of clean water, the testing of clean waters, et cetera, the collaboration with, um, so a conservation district does water, test something with the waters, and, uh, MSU, I think, just told us they're doing some clean water stuff, um, and I thought there was one more, it's like later on, do you?
Like one association, one late association.
Association? So, I think that collaboration I like, but, um, you know, I, so, all this, I think this is their own budget, and I get that, but I wouldn't be putting all this into our budget for services myself.
I guess the question is, how much money do you wish to allocate?
Yeah, we've been at, we've been at like two?
No, it's been four-thousand-five-hundred.
Well, it's been, we were more, and then they dropped it to...
I think the highest was five, maybe six thousand. The last couple of years, it's been four-thousand-five-hundred.
Okay, I thought they dropped it to two.
One year, but we went back up and we...
So four? It's been doing the testing at four, but, go ahead.
Commissioner Anderson.
I like looking at this, would you contract for each of these services? And, you know, I would contract for the database work, you know, there's, there's a thousand dollars. I might contract for the eight-hundred-dollar communications and publications so they can get the word out to people. But the rest of it, would you, would you go out and contract for that with any other group? No, why should we pay that? That's, that's what I'm struggling with here. And the whole idea was that, you know, get them off on their own, because they've been operating on their own, well, operate on your own. That's my view of that.
Commissioner, yes?
Well, I remember the discussion in July when we, uh, talked about this, and, and I was...
Well, I remember the discussion in July when we talked about this and I was reluctant to move away from, from, from the county because I think they do valuable work. At that time, we talked about, well, we can continue to support them. We just don't wanna deal with some of the issues of Open Meetings Act and Trudy. Well, I don't, now I don't wanna go back on that. We said we could support them to do their mission. And their mission requires that these things get done. So I would not be in support of doing less this year than we've done in past years. I think their mission is important. This is something that we want them to do, but we want them to do it without some of the constraints of county government. So I, I think it's a reasonable request or an unreasonable request. And of course, it costs something to do the legal work necessary to become a nonprofit. We need to help them do that.
Actually, some of those costs have been covered by this year's budget. I'm guessing that part will be done by the end of this year. They're very close to being done with that now. So I think that part will be completed this year.
Mr. Law?
Okay, well, two things, because in the first place, I guess I did not understand that we would lose that level of accountability with the Open Meetings Act if they're on their own. And if we're going to give taxpayer dollars to this organization to get their results back, I think we need at least some level of accountability, no matter what the dollars. The, my second point would be, if they are a 501(c)(3), now that allows them now to go out for grant dollars and other funding opportunities, which they may be less accountable for. Well, there's some hoops to jump through, obviously. But that's going to allow them to do that. They could get much more funding than the little bit we generally tend to be able to squeeze out of the dollars we have left at the annual budget system, so.
And I know that's their goal, they're hoping to be able to block the grants, yes.
So if they can set up this year, and like I said, I want to see the testing continue, definitely.
Well, when you get to the point where you start reviewing all of the budget requests, at this time, you can make a decision how much you wish to allocate them. I just thought you should add this now.
Okay.
To put that, at some point, either today or next Friday, you're gonna have to start making decisions on what to allocate funds. So that time, you can make a decision how much you wish to allocate. And once again, this is just a draft budget they put together. So let's say you allocate them X thousand dollars. At that point, we would, I would take that and enter in a form agreement with them that would have the specifics on how that money would be allocated. So put this in your folder along with the other requests that you've heard from the various groups. And then, when we get to the point where we start making some decisions, we can add this to the discussion I wish to move forward.
Any other questions?
Does that make sense?
Okay.
Is Mr. Pope here yet?
You're both up.
Oh, that's good. Mr. Pope had his teeth cleaned, so he didn't know how long that would take to come, but I think it's there. Is that next on the agenda?
Yes, we're going to have a.
Okay, I'll go.
We do have a budget, it's outlined here.
Did we get a hard copy?
Gentlemen?
Yes.
I emailed to you, I think, when they gave a copy.
I saw it, I saw it emailed.
I think it's here.
Yeah, if you have it there.
Oh, there it is, on the back. Okay, thank you.
Can you both come in here?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll sit six feet apart.
Did we see your smile since you just came from down?
I can do it now.
Good morning.
Any cavities today?
No, everything.
No cavities today? Yes.
Good morning.
All good news. Not like the heating and air conditioning one. I don't know what you wanna hear, but the dam is in fine shape. It's operating well. Steve's inspection came out okay. I did an underwater inspection, an upside, everything's in good condition. So our forecast for the budget for this year and next year, we're still on. There's a small exception in that I thought we would get billed ten grand for engineering, so I don't know what page you're looking at, but we're not gonna get billed that ten grand until next year.
As a little aside on the ten thousand, it's, it's the engineering of the parts and pieces, plus it's, he's on board to make sure that it's manufactured properly according to specification and installed properly. So he will be involved during that process and that's part of the ten thousand.
So, Mr. Chairman, what page are you on that you want numbers on?
Who is who?
Oh, Kat Machin is the engineering group. We could just open up the questions, John.
Well, he would. Yep. So that, that top one, Mr. Chairman, where I said twenty twenty, we were gonna spend forty-eight thousand? Is this, was this done by the dam authority or was it just done by you two? No, no, it was done at the dam authority. This page here was done in February. Okay. And we went through, for you people, of what we wanna spend this year and what we wanna spend in the future. So I said we would spend like forty-eight thousand this year. We reduced it to forty, but now I'm gonna take another ten off of that and it's gonna be closer to thirty only this year, which is pretty close to what Jen has in the eight oh five budget right now. There's twenty-nine thousand left in it. So that should be on. Next year, we're gonna install the safety lock and our normal budget that Jerry spends, so we plan on spending thirty-nine thousand next year, but we're gonna move that ten from this year to next year, so you may be spending.
With Michelle.
Yeah, with Michelle.
The ten thousand dollar final engineering payment, that work has been done, right?
Yes and no. He, he gave you guys an estimate two years ago of what it would take to stop this flooding and put the safety thing in.
Right.
He came up, Tony, with a big budget and stuff, and he broke it down, what I'm gonna do and I'm gonna do. And that's not a new, but it was in that ten, he just hasn't billed us yet for the.
Why can't he bill us a ten and pay it this year and get it done?
Because part of that ten is we did not build that, that safety gate yet. All he did was design it.
Okay.
We're gonna meet here next week. We're gonna go ahead with the contract and then he's gotta write a contract, give it to Laurel, administer the contract, and when he's done with that, he'll give us that next ten.
He expects it to still be the ten?
Yeah. I talked to him yesterday and he still plans on keeping it that way, unless something else pops up. Well, okay, so you're saying that this year, you're estimating it being twenty thousand, there's twenty-nine now in the account approximately?
What's in the account will cover, John, if I'm right, what's in the account's gonna cover whatever's gonna happen this year.
Yeah. And, and when we, when, when we initially talked about it, I mean, we talked about twenty thousand a year being allocated to the dam, that, that was my understanding. Every year, we allocate twenty thousand and potentially, yeah, we're just gonna, no?
No, that's not what I.
Eight thousand?
About, about eight thousand. Okay. We estimated twenty to keep the cushion building up because of the ups and downs, but I think you guys decided to just spend eight every year and when you need more money, we'll come to you.
Yeah.
Okay, and I guess I misunderstood that, 'cause I know, I thought we were talking about four hundred thousand over twenty years. Yes. And so that, I saw it as twenty thousand a year. Yes. And then we did it, then they haven't hit their budget when the things come up and we don't have to, you know, go through all of this every time. Right. But you're right about that amount. It's about the average over a ten-year period. Yes, yeah. And that, that's what we were looking at, the, you know, special assessment, is that we were gonna allocate that to twenty, and that's how we would divide it, so. So this year and next year, this year and next year is, we had to build that, that dam and we're gonna build that safety gate. And then, the following year, which is twenty-two, we expect to spend about eleven thousand. We got an inspection coming up in twenty-two. Next year, eight thousand. After that, eight thousand. So you get over these two big years. And it looks like if we add eight thousand this year and we, you know, and then we'd have to add, you know, maybe twenty thousand next year. And then. So when I went through the rough numbers, next year, you, you might be spending forty-seven thousand bucks. Right. And you got twenty?
Forty-seven in twenty twenty-one? Forty-seven thousand in twenty twenty-one.
Correct. You got thirty in there now though already.
Okay.
You're gonna have to come up with a little bit more.
You just said you were gonna, are we starting at fifty-one? You're gonna spend how much this year, twenty-nine?
It will cover everything that's coming in.
Yeah, about twenty-nine.
The fifty-one will cover everything?
Yeah, we're good right, right now, John, right? We're good with the money.
We're good right now, you're gonna.
Coming in, we anticipate coming in.
Yes.
So how much do you expect we have left?
That's a good question.
How much will the fund have left?
Yeah, when, let's say January, John, of this coming year, there'll be some money left.
I would say you're gonna be close to zero. You've got twenty-nine in there now, you've got a few maintenance bills coming in, some phone bills and stuff.
All right, let's back up.
Okay, eight thousand.
Okay, I gotta start, I gotta start with the fifty-one thousand. Was that beginning of the year?
Yes.
Before anything was spent?
Maybe Jen's house, too.
Yeah.
That was beginning of the year.
Let me see, Jen, can you just spare us of these numbers for us here?
Yep. So from twenty nineteen into twenty twenty, the fund rolled with forty-seven, seven, two in fund balance. In this fund, it's typically the same as there is cash. Year-to-date revenues have transferred in eighty-one hundred. Year-to-date expenses has been twenty-nine. Your current fund balance as of today is twenty-five, eight.
I'd be definitely.
Yep, twenty-five, eight. You've got twenty-five, twenty-six thousand, basically. So what's, what's left to be spent in twenty twenty of that twenty-six thousand?
I see inspections, I believe inspections will come. You said Pat's not gonna bill us.
Three thousand, okay?
So that's three.
Phone bills.
Little stuff. So you're gonna have twenty thousand left, basically?
I would say so. We're gonna have a significant amount left to start the year with.
And next year, you're going to need forty-seven in your estimation.
John, I thought you thought, I thought you said you thought it would be close to zero to the end of the year.
Zero more expansion, but I forgot about the balance.
Okay.
Yes, I came up, twenty thousand should be left in that.
Okay, so you're saying the same thing now?
You're right, I did say that.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
We'll start the year out probably with twenty thousand bucks.
And that's without the final engineering payment?
Correct.
Okay. So we're gonna move the final engineering payment to twenty twenty-one, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But we're gonna have a fund balance going forward of about twenty?
About twenty.
All public. So may I ask, so the engineering study is in the forty-seven?
Yes.
The thousand is in forty-seven?
Yes.
They need an additional twenty-seven thousand dollars next year.
Twenty-seven, thirty thousand.
Right. When I said take it out of your general fund or roll it over or do what you want.
Do we have estimates for the safety lock?
Yep. Pretty hard, we went through that.
That's pretty much a hard number.
Pretty much is. He hasn't went out for bids, we'll know more probably this fall, in case we have to make some adjustments.
Upper down?
I don't know. Right now, these guys, these guys are racing around like you can't believe on all kinds of dam stuff, but this one, Deborah, is done at a machine shop and I don't think they're bothered with all this flooding and everything. It's getting the labor to put the thing in. He's got real good, hard numbers on making it. That guy's coming this week, talking to us.
Thirty thousand.
So could, could, I'm, I'm still confused, I'm sorry. Get one short sentence, what are we asking for for two thousand?
Well, what's gonna happen is that we're gonna get into the next, we'll get into the next year and there are items coming down that we have pretty good numbers on, but not, they're not absolute. And when we get the absolute, we'll appear before you and say, here there, here are the numbers now. And we've kind of put our hands around the estimates that are good estimates, and when we get the real numbers, we'll come and ask for money.
Well, you guys did pretty good this year.
Yeah, we were right on.
I kept it simple.
We did.
So if we put thirty thousand in the budget for twenty twenty-one, that would get about the safety lock mechanism next year.
I think that's very, very close.
That's very good. Ty, answer your question. You said, where are we at the end of this year? We're gonna have twenty thousand bucks in there. I was told that gets to get rolled over, not like some other budgets like Parks and Rec. She'd be starting with twenty. What Melinda said, you might be spending another thirty, I came up with twenty-seven thousand, but.
Got it.
I think we're gonna be okay.
John, and you agree with those numbers, right?
You mean the numbers I said on record?
Yeah, and those, yeah, we're all saying the same thing here, right? I think.
Yes, your, your discussion for the future would be, are you going to have them come back to the board when they have their project totals? Or are you gonna automatically transfer and increase that transfer?
Yes.
That's what your future meeting.
In the past, you decided just have them come back, it's my case. So I mean, either way, it's the same amount of money, just how you wanna handle it.
I, I.
Go ahead.
You know, I, I don't mind budgeting for the safety lock, but it would be budgeted for the safety lock, so we, you know, no, no moving line items or pulling from line items, we, you know, that we budget, but I think we need to, I think we need to do the safety lock under the dam and then we can budget for it somehow. I think we need to budget for it and then do it.
Then Melinda's right, you should budget thirty thousand bucks, including the rollover. Rollover plus thirty thousand. And you should be in good shape.
Well, thirty thousand, you know, that would include the annual maintenance, so you'll, but you'll have to come back to us with the final budget and that line item would be one that would not be transferable.
As I know, Commissioner Anderson, we asked a couple months ago about our insurance liability coverage. It is covered by our MMR contract. They are paying specific detail out to damage that would happen in the middle area. So I meant what I read last week, and at some point, they're gonna send one of their inspectors up here, look at our dam, and they wanna see the background costs and everything. But it is covered, part of our, it, it always has been covered.
When they come up, they will be looking at the dam and any potential downstream damages and see if our insurance needs to be adjusted?
Yeah, I'm sure they'll wanna meet with these judges at that point, but yes. But just to follow from that, we did follow up on that discussion.
My point being is, yes, you look at the dam, but you also look at what's the potential downstream.
I'm sure.
Don't get me wrong, there are, there are some, but it's not like Midland, you know, where you've got, you know, thousands and thousands of people and businesses being affected. You know, we have a very small area that could potentially be affected by a dam breach. So I'm assuming that that will be part of that analysis and that, you know, you guys are gonna be stuck working with those insurance guys.
But the question is, is our dam covered by our policy answers yes? Has been from the beginning.
And what's our limit?
Upper limit. Jen, do you remember?
What's our insurance limit?
I think Laurel knows the policy better than I do.
Well, we're just starting the process for the questionnaire again, and.
Well, we're just starting the process for the questionnaire again, and I mean, they...
Yeah, what's got maximum?
I'm gonna say it's at least a million.
Oh, no, it's much.
It's like 70,000 or something per incident or...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
No, no, I'm asking, I'm asking, what, how much coverage do we have out there? We only have a million dollars on the coverage?
No, 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 no.
We have, it...
Look at that, it's a substantial amount.
I think it depends, doesn't it depend on the category, if it's the building versus...
Yeah, the different categories, how, where.
Go ahead and have that for you.
Just like when they come up to do the analysis, we should have an idea of what our, you know, how much coverage do we have?
Yeah, we, I don't wanna just throw a number out there, but we do have that.
I can pull the policy.
But the question is, was the dam covered? Answer is yes. It is part of our coverage and has been.
Any other questions of the dam authority?
So we are looking at a $47,000 budget for next year, not including the carryover.
Okay. Right, 'cause you have to include the 10, correct?
It includes everything.
I'll increase the, I'll have to increase the 2021 by 10, if that was the statement made. Three of this on 2020 is gonna be paid this year. Yep.
So say that again, because I...
So you're gonna, you're asking, I mean, you'll go through this later when you get to this, this fund. But what, what I'm being told is that on 2020, that 10 grand is gonna carry down to 2021.
Yep.
And then your, your capital projects inside that fund is gonna be 31,000 for the safety lock. And then your annual maintenance of about, about eight. Now, will there be inspections in 2021 as well for three, or no?
None.
So it's only every other year?
It's theoretically every third year. And the agencies that are sending the paperwork, we need your inspection, is the kickoff to do the inspection, haven't come at that frequency. They've come in a longer frequency. So they've got a new person on deck and theoretically, 2022, he has not contacted me. I've reached out, just left a message. I haven't met him yet. So we'll see how he's handling this dam. The inspector, Spicer, I've been bugging for the report. They've told me a great report, and I finally got, I sent emails to the head guy and the guy that was in charge of our dam, and finally got an email response. They're working on it this weekend. We will have it. It's, everything was good. The dam is really good shape. Everything was good. The underwater was good, above and below the dam structure itself. When you have a dam that they're absolutely not worried about, inspectors and the state of Michigan, this is what you get. So I feel real good about where the dam is, and they feel real good about where the dam is. And I'll get to meet the new regional guy soon, I hope.
Are you part of the Midland region?
On another positive note, I, I dove on the upstream side of it to check that paint, because we figured we're gonna have to paint in five years.
On the gate, the paint that's on the crossgate.
We wanted to just see how good that gate is, and it's, that paint underneath it is pretty good. I scraped all the crud off of it. I looked at the seals, poked them with my fingers and a prod. So that gate is still pretty good. We forecasted in five years, we might have to dewater, sandblast and do something, but it's in nice shape. I didn't see any bubbling anyplace. So I think we got a good dam. Gotta maintain it. And I think you ought to hire that D and W mechanical guy that's here and figure out how to get him to work on a dam and work on this stuff.
I tried last year. I tried. Didn't quite work out.
Should I get a petition up or what? That's gotta be charged. He gotta be costing you some money.
All right. Thank you very much.
Welcome. I'm available anytime.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
And thanks a lot for the information you sent.
You're welcome.
Now, we're gonna move on into judicial.
Yeah, just a quick update. Yesterday, the three county administrators from Branches, Henshaw, and Leo met with the judges and court administrator to review the budget process. It looked pretty groovy there a couple of months ago. It's much better now. They've been extremely busy. I have some numbers, but I just got them yesterday. I wanna have a chance to look at them, Michelle and Jen and Michelle look at them. And there'll be a full commission meeting. I think Commissioner Bunnick and Lauter, you'll get an email. It's gonna be probably next Friday afternoon, Zoom, to review these numbers. But in a nutshell, as you know, they were closed down there for several months. Revenue dipped because there was no cases coming in, and there were a few tickets issued and so forth. Since that time, they have been doing a lot of Zoom meetings. For example, Leo, I may be off a little bit, we used to average about 102 cases per month here. Right now, they're averaging about 140 or so, and the revenue's picking up. So they're thinking, it's gonna take several months, because right now, they are booked up, Jen helped, he said, two months in advance, they're setting court dates?
Yes.
Yeah, so if you get a violation, across the board, yeah.
Across.
But yeah, the brother's saying. So right now, if you were issued a citation or some court appearance for some incidents, your, your first date would be probably end of October, maybe November, they're that far booked up. And so therefore, the revenue is coming in at a much quicker pace than the past. And they did a five-year analysis, and I, we're actually to the plus, if you look at the last five years. And they think we'll probably be a little bit down this year, but if you go forward with the backlog, realistically, many of the cases in 2020 would not be heard. If someone is to issue a citation, probably in October. Realistically, the court case wouldn't even come up in January. And so there's gonna be a lag there. But we could potentially see a significant increase in revenue first quarter of 2014, or 2021, to cover the cases this fall. So they're pretty much, they feel they're pretty much back on track. They are still in, they have four phases. They're in phase two. They may be going to phase three, which allows sub-jury trials coming up. So they're still working that out. But there's been a significant amount of court cases resolved in the last couple of months, which coincides with the revenue, which has gone up tremendously here. So I'll have a full report for you next, next meeting.
Commissioner Anderson, are they eligible for any COVID money because of...
They had some special, there are so many pots in that CARES Act, some of it they did apply for, and they're getting, and so they're looking at that option now.
I'm just wondering, are, are, you know, are they gonna come out even this year? Or we, or gonna, they're gonna be in a hole? We gotta all kick in more money. That's the bottom.
I, we'll have a more update next week. But it's a much different projection than we had, was it a month ago, Commissioner Lauter, maybe? So they've been extremely busy, just back, there's a huge backlog. So the prosecutor's office and the sheriff's departments weren't issued citations, weren't filed cases, so obviously, there was no revenue coming in. But all those cases that may have been on hold in March and April and May are now going through the pipeline. At a much greater rate than the past. And just here, Jen, I know just from watching your office, you've had a lot of Zoom...
Yes.
...or cases. So there could be up to 20 to 30% more cases from, let's say, August through December than normally, just because of trying to get caught up. So it's a much better picture than we were told a month ago. But I think the full commission meeting, I think we're gonna email today, will be next Friday afternoon. It'll be a Zoom meeting.
Any other questions? Can that bring us a review of revenues and expenditures?
I just put it in there to see how you wish to proceed now. If you want, we could take a break and have a special meeting, because we said it'd be a ton of clock or at the end. Or we can just do this part. I guess it's up to you how you wish to proceed, how much time we allocate this morning.
Commissioner Anderson? We, we have the budget request memo that we started with, and I think it might be helpful. It's just me, if, if we take a minute for each of us to go through on that, the ones we support, the ones we didn't, before we start discussion, just see if we have some common agreements on, on where we are. I think we could probably, if we did that, eliminate many of these from discussion even. Well, I can discuss it now or discuss it later, but I, it's fine to do it now. I can, you know, it's still fresh. Does everybody have that sheet? That's the...
I got mine.
Does anyone need a copy? We gave a lot of paperwork, Chris.
It wasn't in today's package.
No, no.
You know, it was the same one we've been chewing on.
Okay, I've got it.
Does anyone need a copy or...
I got mine.
Mr. Reba?
It was, that's memo of August 6, 2020, if you can look it up online.
Yes.
You're talking about Ty just verbally talking about these? Just like verbally, yes, no?
Yeah. That's, that's my suggestion.
Okay, well, I have one. Do you have one? Any telephone? Okay, good. Does everybody, does everybody have one all right? Did you just do this little...
I, I have, I have mine too. I just am a little confused. Are we talking about each person going through each of these? Are we talking about bringing up the item and then each person saying where they are on it, which makes a little more, would be a little quicker than each of us going through all of this independently?
Right, I, I think that's, I think that's what he was asking us to do, just to say yes or no about them, you know?
As the item comes up?
Yes.
Okay, so, fine, thanks. Can we take a quick five-minute break first?
Sure, that'd be good. Yeah, it's 10:00, 10:30, so that's a good time. So let's take a, well, it'll be probably 10:30 when we get back to session. All right, now after a couple of clocks.
I'd like to call us back to order.
So, we're working now on the last one thing, but we'll have the memo from August 6, 2020, and the first item on that would be from the Sheriff's Marine Division. Commissioner Redd.
And we already agreed that that was not going to be part of the budget.
Yeah, so what we've done in the past year is not put it in the budget, because we don't even know if he's going to get the grant.
Exactly, so we-
So why put it in there if we don't?
That's not even going to be part of it.
Any other comments about that at all? Commissioner Redd.
Are we just indicating thumbs up or thumbs down if we want to talk about any subject again?
That, that was my understanding, that's what we were going to do. Just to, so when we get to the actual budget, we can discuss the things that are going to be included.
Right.
You know, and not even go over those.
All right, so we're going to take this out, I'm fine with that.
Where are we? I apologize, I had to change from downstairs to upstairs and I lost the loca, the connection, but I'm back on, so which one are we on?
We just did the Sheriff's Marine Fund and that is not going to be included.
And was not included originally anyway, so it's-
Thank you.
Okay, so then we would look at the inmate housing and the upgrade of the camera system, and I think that's already been included, okay? So I don't even know if we have to discuss that, I think that's already in there.
I think if you agree, yeah.
Yeah, we all agree.
Yeah, we already committed.
Okay, so, so we don't really have to discuss that either. All right, then again, we go to the Increase in Professional Development Educational Fund. Yes, everybody?
And that's in the budget already.
Yeah, and that's already included, so we don't really have any more discussion about that.
Same thing as body cameras.
Yeah. Commissioner Redd.
I'm confused about, uh, already included at 10,000, but he wanted to increase that to 25, and that shifting around of other stuff is going to do. So are we good at 10,000, is that what we're talking about? We don't need to talk about that anymore? 10,000?
Right, it's 10,000, and he's going to take 10,000 out of his gas and oil budget. So it's, it's keeping his budget balanced, he's balancing it that way, but he'd rather have it in education.
So he'll have 25,000 total.
Right.
10,000 is new, but it's going to be increased, so yes. And that is part of the budget that Jen put together in your books.
Okay, well, I mean, 10,000 on this sheet, so we're approving for 25.
Yes.
I'm good with that, thank you.
Okay. All right, so then we go to the increased body camera with 3,000.
Is that them?
It is included.
And I think, I don't see any reason that we need to discuss it or take it out.
No.
Okay, so that's good. Then, then we go to two additional sergeant's positions.
Which is not in the budget.
Anybody here for it?
Yeah.
There's one for it.
I'm for it.
I see four, I see four, five against it, or four against it. Commissioner Sutis Little, so there's five, so I would have to say that's not going to be included. Then we go to the Capitol Towers of 112,000. We did not receive the grant.
So, so I'm sorry, may I have a couple seconds?
Yes.
There was sort of a, well, that might be the word I was going to use, but I did see something somewhere that said we should be taking roll call votes on these. So while this is a work session, we are basically committing to yes or no for our budget today, so we are making decisions without making decisions. So should we be on record as how we vote on these things? Is that a concern? Because some people can only listen physically, or by, they can only listen to these meetings and not see what those votes are, so.
Well, this is just a work session, so it's not like these decisions are final.
Well, I understand it, but we, we did just by a, by basically a consensus of, it wasn't a consensus, actually. So Deborah and I supported the personnel request, and, and the other five commissioners did not, so how, how is that? So we're just going to do just as a, it's not going to be included because-
So is there going to be no further discussion?
Basically, we just did a vote.
Right.
Good point, I think, I think we probably, I read the editorial, and I think, I think part of what we heard was that people observing us or listening to us need to know what, what, who's making the decisions.
Maybe help of that will just go, Commissioner Mike, Commissioner, they can say yes or no, so that'll say it's on the record.
My question.
Commissioner Redd, we have this here.
This is supposed to be a work session. When we actually get down to doing the budget, then we actually have to do the budget. You know, so if you, at that point in time, you want to go through and do that, we can do that.
So what we have done in the past is, we have taken your input, not, I'm not going to mention it, but every year, based on this, you'll give us a feedback. Jen and Michelle put together a final budget that we'll propose at our October meeting. At that point, you can, you have to formally vote yes or no. At that point, any of you can ask specifically about any of these issues. That's when we take the form and vote. This is giving guidance to Michelle and Jen what to include in the budget or not to include.
I don't know, I don't know.
Mr. Sutis Little, raise your hand.
I, I think part of the issue that perhaps Commissioner Lautner is raising is, are we making decisions? In a way, we, this is what we do in our executive meetings, which I consider really does make decisions, but, and I can see her point, because if we weigh in yes or no here in a workshop, then we, and other items don't come up again for discussion, a decision has been made. So I'm wondering, should we move to our special session and do this as part of the special session where the votes are real? Or do we keep, hold off until we're ready to do it?
Right, we, we can't, we can't do it at the special session because the budget is not named in there. So we would have to wait till our next budget session. The idea of these work sessions, I believe, is to give them, give the, Jen and Michelle the information so that they can put the final budget together. Now, if, the, the idea was to go through this quickly so they would know what to put in, what not to put in. If we're going to have discussions about it, then, then, you know, I think the only thing is, is we have a complete vote, as she's asking, I think any time a commissioner asks for a vote, that we should do that. So we'll just, we'll just go through that each time, and it's been recommended that we go with roll call votes all the time rather than raising our hands, so people know how each of us voting, and so I think we'll just assume that and then we can move along. Commissioner Redd.
A, a point of order, can we do that in a work session? Can we take a roll call vote in a work session? Or are, if we're just looking for general information, do we just indicate in some way that we are, we would like to see it left for discussion or move on?
Yeah. No, it's not, this is a budget session, we're working on the budget, and we can decide what's in and out of the budget that we want. It's not a final vote, it's not, it's a, it's a work session to try to figure out what our budget's going to be.
Okay.
If we can't make any kind of decision, then there's no sense in having a work session. I mean, we have to try to set the budget up, and that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, these are non-binding votes.
No, I, yeah, and I'm fine with that, Will, I just wanted it clarified, so thank you.
Really, up to that point, all the decisions were 7-0, everyone was in agreement.
Yes.
So maybe on this one, you should just go on the record and answer everyone for their own.
We will.
Doesn't that make sense to them?
Yeah, anytime it's going to be a discrepancy, I think we'll have the roll call vote, and that'll be, you know, Commissioner Redd.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. If it's 7-0, we'll just move along because we're on agreement with that, but if there's a 5-2 vote, like this last one, then we should have it on the next budget meeting, which could be a special meeting for the budget. And then that would be when you'd take a roll call vote, and it would indicate, you know, if it was going to be in or not. My thing.
Yeah, I, I think with, you know, we have, they've got to set it up, I don't, you know, if we, if it's not voted, you know, in favor, then I don't think it's going to be included in the budget unless somebody changes their mind and they want to bring it forward. But I think, you know, these decisions, we're setting up the budget, and that's the idea.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rush.
And, and the point that I wanted to make, it doesn't matter what the vote is here today because it's non-binding.
Yes.
And it doesn't mean that we can't have further discussion on any one of the issues as opposed to what you just indicated to me that there would be no further discussion. But that's not necessarily true. That discussion can happen again.
So just to clarify, in October, our meetings are the 6th and the 13th, 1st and 2nd. We will also have a public hearing where I can input on the budget. At that point, we will draft your comments into a formal budget. Any of you can ask to have any addition added or removed or have further discussion. So that's when the formal budget process takes place. This is just a work session to get input, because we need clarification from you on how you're proceeding and what you want to include or not, because if not, then we'll never get to the end of the process. It's the same process we have used, probably the only difference is, if it's not unanimous for the record, it probably would be helpful to get a clarification of that. So people listening, now, we do broadcast the meetings, they are on YouTube, people can watch them, so they can still get, but if they don't have access to the computer and just want to listen to it, probably would be helpful to do that.
And, and thank you for that, Commissioner Lautner, I appreciate that, that we can clarify that. So, so we'll go back then to the personnel, the sheriff's personnel, and, and in that, I would just ask for a roll call vote on whether we want to have this into our, our budget, our, the formal budget for 2021 proposal.
Commissioner Ansorgi?
No.
Commissioner Bonnet?
No.
Commissioner Lautner? Yes. Commissioner Rattenbach?
No.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
She's muted.
Yeah, you are muted.
I don't think so at this time.
And Commissioner Wessel?
No.
So I have two to five.
Okay, thank you, and I do appreciate that, again, Commissioner Lautner. All right, so then that brings us to the Capitol Tower, as far as the upgrade, and I, I know that we have not received the 2% funding, that's been, I think that was all, so, okay, what is, I'm, I'm saying no, that we're not going to put it in the budget.
I don't think I'm right now, no.
Not at this time? No, I'm at the very top, so I'll go with agreement. Does anybody, is, is anybody who wants us to put it in the budget? Seeing none, all right, then we move on to the next item. So this is the, the central tower, Empire Tower, the amplifiers. It's going to, supposed to come out, and this has not been included.
And Jen, this would be from a special fund, right? Not from a general budget?
That's correct, it's the tower.
It'd be the tower, so I, I would say we do it. I mean, I, I think we should include it in the budget.
I think, yeah, I would throw it in for now.
It's a safety issue.
Mm-hmm, it's a safety issue, and one that we solely control, correct?
Yes, yeah. Is there anyone who disagrees with this, would not want it in the budget? Seeing none, then we will include that, and then we move on to the EMS, the two generators.
And once again, that's from a special fund, correct, Jen?
Yes. So it's the same thing, I, I think.
I think we need to do it, we can't afford not to.
Right, right.
Generators sometime, they're only good for, so we may be able to sell the old generators too, correct?
Yeah, there may be some value.
Check, check.
So then that would bring us to, to them, to the general.
Do you have a hand, Red?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Redd.
So are we putting it at 10,000? 10,000?
I think that-
I, I think we would have to go with the higher number.
We would go up for bids and-
Yeah.
Good number, so, we, we would come back to the board with that recommendation.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to indicate on my notes here what we're doing, so I'm going to put it in. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would say we put it in the 15,000, knowing what generators cost and the installation cost. I think that, that would be more appropriate for two of them. Any, um, any other questions about that? That, that was a good statement, can thank you for that. So now, so then it brings us to probate and family court, as far as the deputy probate register position. We for that?
Yeah, down.
Yeah, cool. I'm not, yeah, this will have to be a roll call vote.
Can you go down the list? Commissioner Lautner?
No.
Commissioner Rattenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
No.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
She said yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ansorgi?
No.
Commissioner Bonnet?
Not at this time.
Okay.
And that's what I was going to say.
That's a no.
Three, four, just for discussion. Because I, I'm hoping that they're going to get caught up, is, is my hope. They've been working like crazy up there, and I think they're going to get caught up and be okay, but if it, if we end up halfway through the year, we have to do something.
So four, three, right?
Yeah.
Three, three, four.
Three, four, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So that will not be included.
Yes, not, 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 not.
Three, yes, and four, no. It was no.
It's a no?
Four, no, three, yes.
Oh, okay. Three, four, then, okay.
So then, that, then it brings up-
Oh, it was no, yes, I knew that.
I'm sorry.
I had it, I had it, yes.
Okay, Park and Rack Commission?
Yes.
45,000?
Nope.
Let's have a roll call vote on this one.
Okay. So this is for Parks and Rack?
Yes.
And this is their capital improvement?
Yes.
So this is already included in the budget. Commissioner Rattenbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
No.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
Is it already, it is already in the budget?
Yes, it's their annual 45,000 that, that they do every year.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ansorgi?
No.
Commissioner Bonnet?
No.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Four to three.
So it passes, so this will be included. And then now it's the 30,000 requested for the grant. Again, and then a roll call vote. Do you have a question on it?
Well, I thought we had already discussed this and say that it's, you know, it's a grant, and that we don't put it in the budget until they get the grant.
You probably should do the same as with the vote, because we don't know if they'll get the grant.
You know, I thought we had this discussion already, that we might work on it and put it in the budget, but if somebody wants it in, I guess we got to vote.
Okay, well, that's what I, I guess, is there anybody who wants to put this into the budget? Seeing none, then we will not include this. All right, then, then it brings us to the mapping, updated county mapping. All right, then, then it brings us to the mapping, updated county mapping project.
I have a question before we.
Go ahead.
We had, we had talked about the possibility of money coming out of the register of deeds, that Grand Traverse County is allowing that to happen.
That county also has allowed that. However, you don't have the authority. It has to be agreed upon by the register of deeds and Mrs. Miller, Miller's pretty emphatic that she's not going to allow that.
So the only option we would have would be to cut her general fund support some amount.
You would have that option, yes.
So I, it's not a part of this, but.
Right.
When it comes back, I'd like to talk about doing that.
Okay.
Would you like that, Jen, on next Friday?
Let's keep going.
Right.
Okay, so I'll put that for next Friday, Jen?
Yes. I mean, it's sent to be requested by one commissioner and goes on, so.
Yeah, I think there was a request, right?
Yes. All right, so, so then, then that's not, so we're, that's not included for the Park and Rack. Now, if the man, we're still on mapping here. And is that, everybody okay with that? Seeing no opposition, then we would say yes to that.
The only question I had is which fund is that going to, is that just a general fund?
Yeah, general fund to mapping fund.
Okay.
Okay, what did we, I thought that you were going to talk about next Friday. What did you?
Well, he wants to do, talk about the mapping and the funding of it.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure I understood.
Isn't that what you, you wanted? The mapping and the funding of it, how we're going to fund it?
All right, all right.
At this point, we're saying, put it included. It's a matter of how we're going to fund it.
I just want to clarify that we're.
Okay. So then, that brings us then to, uh, planning.
Yeah, and this one, and this one was, it was solid waste instead of planning. So it's solid waste when it comes to that one. It falls under TRIBIE, but it's the Solid Waste Council that is looking for more per diem, um, for their, um, for something that's going on with them.
They had to, I believe, come up with a new plan?
Yeah, it's only, I think it went up by two thousand total, but it's five thousand between per diem and travel. She increased her per diem by two thousand. And that is included.
And I, I guess for clarification, is this going to be so when they go to these, you know, sites for recycling, whether it's electronics or whatever, they're going to get per diems? The people who, or is it just for the meeting?
I believe for the meetings.
Just, just for so they can work on the general.
Yeah, they have to have a new plan in place.
Okay.
Yeah, when I volunteered for, um, those cleanups, I just did it. Yeah, I didn't.
I don't think anyone just paid for the cleanup. Except for the staff people that are there. The support staff are there, because they're our unique employees.
So this has been, um, included, so is there anyone who, who does not want it included? Okay, so then, then we'll move on then to plan on that being included, the senior services department.
That's off.
Yeah, they pulled it off, Jen.
Okay. I'm sorry, well, I spoke of that. All right, so then the information technology department, we have a new IT server.
Well, that's included in the budget.
Yeah, so I would say yes. Okay, let's see now. All right, then, uh, then the Polycom system?
It's here. We already bought it, so. You took care of that.
That goes into this year's budget, so it's off of there. We say no to this into the new budget. Does that make sense? Right, then capital projects, we have the split coupling pump. Think we have to do it?
Yeah.
Safety saved.
That was dangerous last year.
Yeah. So that's a yes. And then capital projects.
Actually, can we go, I'm sorry, can we go back to that? So, um, I know Jerry's not here and I know Chuck knows something about this. So on the split coupling, um, pump for heated sidewalks, do we need to do that now?
I think we should do it this year as well.
Yeah, that's a very good question.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, so.
And I think Jerry's enough funds issued it just to do it, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'm just telling them, just to proceed from this year's budget.
Okay, so I'm going to put, I'm here on my notes, then I'm going to remove it. Yep, and placed in 2020.
So all we're doing here is deciding not to put it in next year's budget.
Yes, but this is in, so I need to take it out.
Yes.
Yes.
We can get it done this year.
Great, great.
We can't make that decision here.
Right. So split coupling is going to move to 2020.
All we can do is take this out of the budget.
Well, certain processes do, though, and probably have a recommendation next month.
Okay. Now you have your HVAC.
We have to make, we're going to have a discussion on that separate from this discussion.
That would be the, the special meeting after this.
Correct. So I, I, I would say let's defer this particular item for that discussion.
Okay.
And the next? Phases one and two, or phases two and three, okay.
All right.
Uh, clean water and the dam. I think on the dam, you've kind of made that decision this morning to proceed, right?
Yes.
Anyone object to that?
Yes.
And I, and I think, you know, we have the months that can be included.
So Jen, you have the answer.
Yep.
Got a question up here.
Commissioner Rittenbach?
Included at what amount? Thirty?
Yes.
I'll have to, um, given to, if you guys are, are you guys going to decide, are you going to go fund by fund later in another meeting? Or are we thinking that this is going to be our consensus?
You're going to put that together for us.
Okay, so, because typically I have you look at the fund, you know, I have you look everything over, but that's fine if you don't, that's not a big deal. So what I'll do is currently the proposal for the dam fund, I believe, is in here as eight. So from our discussion this morning, as Commissioner Launer pointed out, it will be ten for engineering, thirty-one for a safety lock, and annual maintenance of eight. So I brought that up to forty-nine thousand. And that will be transferred from the general fund.
That isn't my understanding. My understanding is, is they're going to have nineteen or twenty thousand left.
Well.
And so we're going to add the thirty thousand more, not.
But it's going to move to the general, won't it, basically? They're not going to have it left in there. They.
No, it's left in their fund.
Oh, it's left in their fund. Right. So you're thinking, you want to play safe and do a twenty thousand fund balance forward and move twenty-nine in?
Well, we said thirty.
Okay, right, yeah, about thirty, whatever, it's close enough.
Right.
Yes, exactly.
That, that was my understanding.
Yes, exactly. Okay, so fund balance forward to balance their budget will be twenty K and then the remaining will be a transfer in from the general fund.
Yes.
But we have a proposed budget of forty-nine thousand.
Yes. Stat?
Does that, does that work?
Anyone agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then, little on clean water?
Yeah, and little on clean water will be included. We'll just have to discuss the, the amount when we get to it.
Okay, well, I thought we were going to do that now.
You want to do that now?
Sure.
Okay, let's do that. Commissioner Sodis Little, you have your hand up?
On a different topic, I'll wait till we finish with this discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a question though. So I mean, little on clean water, when you were discussing with them, are they going to allocate funds? Are they going to collect on funds this year at the forty-five?
They're going to spend some of that to get restructured. I think they have a couple other projects they're working on. I don't know the specifics.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if you wanted a clarification.
Yeah, I can find out by next week.
They're only going to do twenty-five this year.
They are going to have some cost this year yet that they haven't spent.
Okay.
Which is part of the twenty-twenty. You approved four thousand five hundred for this year.
But have they taken any of that out?
Yes. They've sold it, haven't they?
No, nothing's been spent this year.
Okay, they will be spending some, I know that for sure.
Should they be spending it out there? What's that?
Well, you, it's, I mean, you pretty much know that they have to do it, so, yes. It, it won't be a significant amount. I know they have some projects they're working on. I don't think, I think they'll have a surplus this year, though. I don't think they'll spend the entire amount.
Well.
Rush.
Go ahead.
I find it interesting that last year we gave them forty-five hundred dollars and they haven't spent it.
Well, so.
I'm not done, thank you. And, um, this year, they're asking for more. I agree with Commissioner Ansorgi that I think we should be looking at those items on this list that they presented to us that we would normally, um, contract for. So that looks to me about, what, thirteen hundred dollars tops?
Eighteen.
Fifteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, if you do both of the.
Are you checking about number five, the eight hundred for communications?
No. I'm, I'm talking about the five hundred for the data, five hundred for the database, and eight hundred for the communication publications. Because that's, that was my proposal. That's what I would say, we, we, we would end up paying for if we were to contract out to somebody.
So number two and number five?
Two, three.
Number two, number three, and number five.
Okay. Two, three, five. I think, I agree with that.
Okay, eighteen hundred dollars is what I'm proposing. Again, it was mentioned that there are 501(c)(3) or will be shortly, and we'll have plenty of grant opportunities and donations.
Commissioner Wes.
The, uh, the three things that Leon Clean Water does that's so important to our county would be education, advocacy, advocacy, and research. I think we ought to give them the amount that we gave them last year and tell them you have up to that amount of money to do your education work, your research work, and your advocacy work. We're trying to keep them successful and you don't help them be successful by the first year they're independent or working on independency to cut their budget. So yes, you have some problems with some of what's on their budget request, let's allow them up to what they had last year for the three functions that they do that relate so valuably to this county's clean water resources. Swimmers itch is in there, uh, weed control is in there, septic pollution is in there, erosion control is in there. They can use this money for education, advocacy, and research, and we ought to help them do that, not increasing their budget, but not decreasing it. Because when we talk to them about going out on their own, we said, we're going to continue to support you.
Thank you. Can I suggest something? This is just. I'll pass your hand up first.
Well, I just want to agree with Commissioner Wessel, that we have, you know, decided that they're going to split off from us, and I understand that, but we do need to continue to support them and to cooperate in what we would, what we believed would be a collaborative relation. So I'm, I'm, I'll go ahead at the forty-five hundred.
Commissioner Sodis Little?
I, I agree. I would go ahead at the forty-five hundred because, as we all know, you know, it's a good point that they'll be able, as a 501(c)(3), to go after grants and funds, but you have to start to apply. And that is going to take them probably the better part of this year to figure out and to apply for and to get funding for next year. So we did say we were going to continue to support them, and I do think we should honor that commitment.
Commissioner Lohner?
If allowed, I would like to ask, um, Clark, did you have some info of why they have not spent the budget this year?
Yes, due to COVID, they haven't met.
They haven't yet.
So they've done nothing?
I, I believe.
They met in January and February, haven't they?
But what is having, what does meeting have to do with how they're spending their money? So I thought they were doing testing and?
And I think there may be some invoices coming. I don't know, I can get more fishing next week. I know there's some work going on. We haven't been invoiced, though.
Yeah.
May I suggest something? Because this is just the budget process. And really, if you don't have the scissors right now, if you put in, let's say, forty-five hundred in the budget right now, because they're going to be independent, once they do that, we have to have an agreement with them. Once you get that agreement, that agreement will have a specific amount and specific service amount. So in theory, you will have to make that decision at some point. If you put in, let's say, forty-five hundred now, that does not guarantee they'll get forty-five hundred, because they'll still have to have an agreement in place with the, with the specific items and the costs associated with those items to, to get those spots.
Um, I, I really like the idea of what I've, I've heard here today about sticking with what we would normally contract with, and I don't think that's at forty-five, at forty-five hundred. And, and I see, what I really like about this is, um, the opportunity with 501(c)(3) to have fundraisers. And I just heard an interesting thing on the way up here today, and I think it was Algrabites that's doing a bridge walk, and of course, this year it has to be virtual, but ten bucks and you, you film yourself walking across the bridge for ten bucks and raising money for something. What a great opportunity with bridges across most of our, how many bridges do we have? Lot in our county. You know, do your community bridge walks every year as a fundraiser for them and, and it's just, it's a lot of fun and I think that they have a lot of support. They could have an enormous budget in no time, just with, and it wouldn't have to be labor day, bridge walks or, you know, whatever. I just think that they're going to be, they're going to be okay. If they get organized this year, I think they're going to be fine and we can just blend what, write the contract for what we normally would. So I, I like the eighteen hundred.
Commissioner Rushton, you have? Commissioner Ansorgi, anything else?
No.
Okay, I, you know, I, I agree with Commissioner Wessel that, that we have told them that we would fund them through it. I also notice that they haven't, you know, I realize that they haven't spent any of the forty-five hundred, so a lot of that's going to be back into our general fund. So, so I, I would, that's, that's my sense. I mean, yes, they'll send some bills, but we won't get any. So I'm saying that that money, if they don't send us bills, that money won't go to that, to them at all. So we can kind of consider that for next year's budget and we can keep it at forty-five hundred, and it's the same thing. They don't send us the bills, they're not going to get the full amount. So, so we're, we're, we're doing what we said we could do, and we can, we can judge it from there, so. So I, I would have, I would say that we, you know, that we plan on doing it at 4,500, and we'll have to do a roll call, Commissioner Lautner.
Question, so, um, what you're saying though, what I've heard is they, they, are they going to be organized this year? They're gonna spend that money this year out of this year's budget, that's 2,000, so I don't think we have to be at the 45.
Right.
So why don't we roll that back, and I would rather have them come and ask for more money, rather than put it in the budget, so if you roll 2,000 off of 45, you're at 2,500, because they're really, they, they have the money this year to get organized. So let's, let's do the 25 then, and get them up and, and going. Makes sense to me.
Well, I understand that logic, but, but I'm just saying that we've, that we're rolling over, whatever we get returned to the general fund, will go towards that 45, and we give them the spot, what we've been funding them at, and we don't reduce it because they're going on their own. I think that just is the wrong thing to send the message, to reduce it, their amount, when they're, when we're asking them to go on their own. We're no longer gonna have our planning commission doing their minutes, we're not gonna be taking care of any of those things, that'll be on their own. And so, using, we're actually gonna be reducing it, but we're not putting any help into it, but we're not reducing, reducing it by the dollar amount, I guess, so they will, in a sense, it'll, it'll look like we're, you know, supporting them as we always have. Commissioner Rushman.
We budgeted the $4,500, they haven't spent any of it that we know of, we don't know how much money's gonna come back to the general fund so that they would have an opportunity to spend it again. And for that reason, um, I don't wanna allocate another $4,500 because we don't know how much of the existing 4,500 they're gonna be spending. They haven't spent anything today, they certainly have, could take $2,000 of that and get their 501(c)(3) fees taken care of. I think that their, I think their budget should be less than it was last year because they have the opportunity to spend those dollars this year to do any one of these things this year that they need to do, and may very well do it. The problem for us is that, you know, we don't see what they're spending their money on. All we do is get it out. So.
Commissioner Wessel.
They were allocating much of their budget to do their annual, their summer clean water conference, that because of COVID, they had to discontinue plans. We can't criticize them for planning for that and then having to cancel it, and then saying they didn't use our money. They didn't use our money in the same way that most organizations have changed the way they do business this, this summer. So they, they would have done that, and they would have spent the money. If they don't spend it, it will be returned to us, and we can give them support that we had promised them that we'd give them.
Well, in, 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 in my mind, it, it, let's look like our travel and mileage, you know, budget. We didn't spend it this year because, because of COVID, we couldn't. So do we reduce it to nothing now because we didn't spend it? I mean, that's the same thing we're saying to them, they couldn't spend it, basically, for what they do, so do we want to reduce it to say, next year, because they couldn't spend it this year, they probably need more, but we keep it the same, at least we're, we're sticking with what we hold that we would do. Commissioner Lautner.
Yes, thank you, no, I don't want us to look like we're criticizing, because we are not. What we're saying is they're sitting on their entire budget in mid-September. So what we're saying is take that budget and do a lot of what they're requesting the money for in 2021, and do that this year, therefore, they won't need 5,400. So I do the math, I come up with 2,500, and they'll be able to go forward. So, and I know other years they've done their conference, I'm less than that, so I would just ask the chairman to ask us what amount we would like to fund this at, what amount would we like in the budget, and see if you get your four numbers.
Commissioner Lautner.
And that was exactly my point, these dollars, if not used, to this point today, September, can be reallocated for a different purpose. I understand that because of COVID, they couldn't use the dollars as planned, however, they still have these dollars available, available to them for the next four months. So if they busy themselves and reallocate $4,500 they currently have, take care of some of these issues that they have on the list, I see no reason to increase their budget for the same things that we have money sitting there for them to currently use. That's my point.
Commissioner Sotis.
The money they don't spend this year will go back to the general fund. Can we please have the vote on putting $4,500 in for 2021?
Point of order.
Yes.
The first request was by Commissioner Rushton for $1,800. That was the first request. Now, the chairman made an alternate request for $4,500. Are you going to override the first request and vote on your request just because you're the chairman?
Yes, is, is I, I know, because there has been no motion as far as I know.
There was never an emotion for any of this.
We're just trying to.
She said that's what, yeah, Commissioner Ansorji's right, she had said that that was her proposal, whatever you called it, was it?
Yes, I did say.
You can vote for the 1,800, or, or you can just ask us, as I said, what amount do we, what amount do we want to put in the budget? And see if you get.
I, I think that's probably the best way to do it, is just ask what amount, and, and then we can see if we can get four to agree on an amount.
Right.
Would that be alright?
You understand, Mike.
Yeah, I, I, I see, yeah, I guess I didn't see that, and I was just, we were just still talking. Commissioner Sotis Little, did you, I thought you had your hand up there?
No, no, I think it's fine, let's just get to a vote of anything.
Alright, so, so, yeah, so, so if each, as you call each person's name off, if they can say their amount.
Okay, Commissioner Rushton, 1,800. Commissioner Sotis Little?
4,500.
Commissioner Wessel?
4,500.
Commissioner Ansorji?
1,800.
Commissioner Bonnet?
4,500.
Commissioner Lautner?
2,500. That was a new one.
And Commissioner Rettback?
4,500.
4,500 to be proposed for 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you, and just to clarify, that even if you put some in the budget, 4,500 will not be transferred to them. We still have to have agreement, we still have a contract with the services for that dollar amount, so you have a choice to, you still have a choice to modify that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Ansorji, I appreciate that.
Jen, did we forget anything? At one time, Michelle, wanna talk about healthcare costs, is that still something we wanna talk about?
No, that was just on the memo, just to let you know what has changed, and what, so at the end there, um, it's telling you that we kept the 250 proposed as additional MERS, um, and then, um.
The clerk just popped in, and she heard her name being called.
Yeah, she heard it.
Anything you wanna talk about healthcare that we haven't talked about?
No, I, I think we're just gonna wanna be aware of knowing that that stock yet may be increasing.
Yeah.
I don't think we have discussed that with the board yet.
So we're gonna have to keep that as soon as we know, because of, you know.
But to go forward now for the budget, there's a lot we have to do.
I think we're good.
Commissioner Sotis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, what, what I wanted to go back to is, uh, the probate family court. I feel very strongly that that should be left in the, the budget, there were votes, uh, straw votes that, and would take it out. I think we should invite, uh, the judge back, she made a very strong case, not just for getting caught up, but she laid out the facts that there is a lot of work that they, that was not being done, that needs to be caught up and carried forward, and that the additional responsibility was gonna be very difficult to manage without additional hours, so if there are, if it takes one commissioner to request, then I'd like to request that she be brought back and give a chance to add to her thoughts so that we really are in a complete understanding, if we're gonna take it out, we understand it's not just getting caught up. There's more than that involved in her request, thank you.
Is, is that what will happen? Is that going to automatically?
Is this a work session, yeah, it can be brought back up again, just as you can do the same thing with any of the other things on the,
Okay.
on the Park and Rec or whatever else, I mean.
Yes, then I would like to request that our sheriff come back before us with his request for the two sergeant positions. I think he made a very strong case that, um, I don't think I was speaking out of line when he spoke of age. When he spoke of, of his age, and as we elected him to be a, an active deputy as a sheriff, things are changing, so, um, we, what we didn't throw out there was the, is the opportunity to just do one for one year and cover some of that gap, so I think that that could be revisited. And, um, the, the Parks and, and Rec, um, the 45,000 stayed in, the 30,000 did not, but if I understand that right, if the grant is accepted, that would come back to us for the, okay, so I'm okay with that.
Yeah, because we really don't know, hey, the way money is, some of that we may not even get a grant.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, if we're, if we're bringing back staff, then I think it would be appropriate not only to put the register of deeds on the agenda, but invite the register of deeds to, to come in and justify why, if other counties can do that with those funds, we don't, and defend the use of, I understand she's reserving that money to buy new computers again, and I think she just bought new computers last year. So I think that we need to have her address the, the, the possibility that we use some of her funds to help offset the cost of this mapping system that we all said was a priority and that qualifies for that money, but I'd like to have her come and, and speak to that.
Next Friday.
At our, our next budget meeting?
So at this point, I would like the sheriff, the judge, and Dorothy and Jen Grant and Chen will be the most likely to end up coming for the register of deeds. We're talking about next year's budget.
Commissioner Ansorji.
Depending on how our next discussion goes on the special meeting, I may make other requests.
Yeah.
Two and a half million dollars makes a, a big difference in our discussions.
Yes.
Pretty big.
That sounds like it's rip.
Rip, it's a promise.
Alright, is there anything else? Jen, have we missed any issues?
No.
Well, this was productive, we mentioned progress, so that brings us to.
You think so?
Public, public comment? What's the number there? I don't, I lost my ears. Two, two, three, one, two, five, six, eight, one, zero, nine, if there's any public comment. Two, three, one, two, five, six, eight, one, zero, nine. I'd like to make a comment, but I appreciate the idea of bringing up the editorial, I, you know, I didn't read, I guess I didn't read it thoroughly enough, you know, so I think that, that makes it much clearer for the public and, and those listening, so. Thank, thank you for that. Any other comments by commissioners? Commissioner Rettback.
Commissioner Ansorji and I have another meeting scheduled for 12, with the Board of Health, I mean, 12:30 with the Board of Health. So if we're in the, um, middle of our special meeting, would it be possible to take a 15 or 20-minute break at 12:30?
I think we should be done. Yeah, I'm hoping we'll be done by that time, but it's, anything's possible here, we're having.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Yeah, if we start the special meeting at 11:30, we should be done.
Okay.
It's a one item.
Thanks.
Alright, is there anything else? So, so I would say this meeting's adjourned.
So 11:30, Jen?
We had no calls for.